Someone I someone I I am black salt message.
I did.
Okay.
I know it.
No, no.
And they have no type of action. But no, I can't. Okay, we're recording. We're all good.
We are ready, Madam Chair.
See the recording button going. Okay, good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Lyon County Board of County Commissioners is Thursday, November 3rd, 2022. Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lyon Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or separately posted agenda. Please note that this meeting may break between 11:30 and 1:30 for lunch. Roll call. Please note that all five commissioners are present in chambers. And at this time, we're going to do the invocation given by Irene Albritton of the First Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if I could please get everybody to rise.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You're muted.
I'm not showing muted.
Good.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Let us pray. We thank you, God, for this day and for the opportunities for life and service it provides. Thank you for our country and our government and the gift of leadership assembled here for this meeting. Grant each participant wisdom and courage to make the decisions that are in harmony with good for the people that they represent. Grant them the ability to be discerning and willing public servants as they provide leadership and guidance for Lyon County. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Hey, Commissioner Gray, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Please join me ready again. The United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. I notice I always pick on you for the pledge because I turn and you're the one that's right there.
I was hoping you'd do it today for explain the reason later.
Okay. At this time, we'll have public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Afterwards, please print your name for the clerk at the desk, and if you're on Zoom, if you could please spell your name for the clerk. So anybody for public participation for anything that's not on the agenda. Okay, does have any hands, Andrew? I don't look. We got more than one page, right?
Not no more than one page.
Oh, we only got one. Okay.
No one on Zoom.
All right. Well, seeing none at this time. Number five or possible action, review and adoption of the agenda. Is there any changes or anything to note? No, can I get a motion, please?
I'm sure I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Can I get a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the and adopt the agenda. Can't talk today. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, hang on. Back up. Did I have any public comment on that? Seeing none. Okay. Again, all in favor, aye?
Still aye.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, skipped a step. Please note, we have two time certens at 10:00 AM this morning. Seven A for presentation only. Recognize Kaylee Christensen for her outstanding service, delivery of differential response and family support services and dedication to enhancing the lives of Lyon County families. Ms. Shayla.
Good morning, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services. For the record, this morning, we're recognizing Kaylee Christensen. So differential response is a pretty tough gig. It's not what one might consider a glamorous position in aiding children, particularly when they set out to work in the social services arena. They provide services to families that don't meet the higher criteria for Division of Child and Family Services or CPS to respond. Things like educational neglect, physical neglect, medical neglect. There are issues that if they're not addressed, they could impact those youth for a lifetime, and at worst, these families might end up with DCFS or CPS if we don't intervene. In many ways, they're the first attempt at aiding a family and correcting their course. So what happens in their process is we receive a referral from DCFS, the division manager Jenna Dykes, she reviews it, and she identifies if it's differential response appropriate, and then assigns it to staff. Staff at that point in time reach out to the family. As you can imagine, these aren't typically calls that are welcomed with open arms as Kaylee has to reach out to a family and say, somebody's called the Division of Child and Family Services and made a report, and there's an issue, and we need to correct it. So Kaylee has this amazing ability to not only have these hard conversations, but turn them into something positive for these families. She helps them through motivation and making meaningful change in their lives to course correct and make those significant changes that those families need to really aid those children. We have an internal process for satisfaction surveys for all the programs that we provide services through, and Kaylee consistently receives the most glowing remarks on those satisfaction surveys. Aside from also meeting all of the rigorous demands and requirements of the grants, the data, all of those things of which her supervisor gives her glowing glowing approvals and appraisals. I wanted to share a couple of the different votes that came from those surveys. One family said, we were scared at first, but she put us right at ease about why she was here. I would recommend that others had the teachings and knowledge, knowledge that she has so easily helped us obtain. She was very sweet. Another said, from what we know, which isn't much, but having people like Kaylee really helps us because she's personal and really helped take the edge down, knowing how to explain the process, which happened to spread the word about what y'all do. And another said, and there's plenty more, what a great person. The kids and I love her. Give her a raise. We love what she has done for our family. So with that, we wanted to recognize Kaylee for all of the outstanding work that she does in a very difficult program and while still managing to get amazing satisfaction surveys from her clients that she serves despite having to call and give them some, what some consider some pretty bad news.
So are you gonna bring her around, get a photo with her?
I am. I would love for you to be there.
I noticed she's wanting, not wanting to get out of that chair over there. It's kind of like, come on, get up.
Yeah, you guys coming in? Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No.
No.
All right, hurry. Put an eye out for the button.
Slap, senior chief manager.
Thank you.
Again, Kaylee, thank you for all that you do.
Especially with a very how do I, how can you say, very taxing, mentally taxing and emotionally taxing job. Thank you.
Hey, I'm going to go to Commissioner comments, starting on my left with Commissioner Jagetson.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I was the under the friendly chapter of the Jang. And that's jobs for Nevada graduates. They asked me to be the keynote speaker, and it was impressive to see what they're doing in those programs for all of our youth to help them after graduation, find employment and get rolling. More people we have working, the better. So want to thank them for that in that program. And then I am a cheapskate when it comes to date night with my wife, so I took her to the food bank and we boxed over four tons of food with with some other folks. And that went, the what we box that night goes to senior citizens in northern Nevada, and so I challenge all of us to do what we can to help out our seniors and youth through the cold winter months as the winter hits. So with that, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. I mean, there was an H in there somewhere.
Maybe you're going back.
No, I just.
Dave, I am so sorry.
That's not a problem. Yeah, with prices going up, it's always a good idea to be watching for the people who are on fixed incomes and doing everything we can to make sure they're fed and warm. So this time of year, it's tough, especially with Thanksgiving. You want everybody to have something good to eat that day, at least that day. Been out of Nevada for most of the last two weeks on the East Coast in Boston and places such as that. And then went over to California last week to visit family. So not a whole lot's going on, but I do want to say that my chair for Smith Valley Advisory Board is, he has three bones broken in his neck. Tom Renner, I wish you a speedy recovery and hopefully I can talk with you later today and see how things are going. But that's pretty much it. When you're happy to be back in Nevada, that's the biggest thing I can say. Just happy to be here.
Thank you. So since I made the mistake the first time around, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's quite all right. I really don't have much to report this this week. I do want to encourage everyone who hasn't voted to please do so. This is your chance to exercise. You're right. I know that this is a tough year and there are several races. You kind of got to hold your nose and pick the lesser of the two evils, but it's still important to go out there and vote. So please participate, and that's it.
Commissioner Gray.
All righty. Thank you. I think you said you twisted your knee, but come on, your head too.
It's the pain. I'm telling you. Yeah, I can't think straight.
Had a had a wonderful, wonderful Nevada Day this year. I don't know. How many of you made it out the Nevada Day Parade? I know, Dr. Titus, I think you were out there, right? It was the, I think it was the most crowded I have ever seen. It was just a phenomenally attended parade, both with entrance and with people lining there out. It was so much fun. Great day for it, too. Had a great town hall in Dayton discussing development south of the river. We got to quash a lot of myths, bring a lot of facts. Andrew, thank you so much for that. There's I'm still getting good feedback. I mean, at the Dayton Advisory Board last night, there was still good feedback on that. They really appreciated the honesty and the transparentness and, you know, the just the ability to answer the hard questions with the hard answers, and they're they're happy about that. The it's election time, as everybody knows. Please get out there and and vote. I don't care if you're voting for Mickey Mouse or a Democrat or Republican or the Green Party. You know, and and it's, you know, something I've always said that's been taken out of context lately, but I'm going to say it again. Anyway, voting is not just a right. I believe it's also a responsibility of being a citizen. There's not too many responsibilities we have as, you know, citizens, and we shouldn't neglect that right. So if you or anybody you know needs a ride to the pole that wants to vote in person, or if you've got ballots you need picked up, we can do that now. We will get people out, and I say we, I mean, there's people you can call. You call me personally. I'll pick up ballots. I'll drive anywhere to make sure somebody's vote gets counted and let us know. And along the same lines, I do want to say this is probably in all likelihood, God willing, my last B O C C meeting. It has been an absolute honor serving this county, my district and the residents, and get a look at the smiley faces up front, even Russ's all the time. He even said, good morning to me. Good morning again, Russ. But it truly has been. I I'm going to miss it greatly. I mean, it's you know, moving, moving on to legislature doesn't necessarily mean moving up. There's a lot of things I won't be able to do anymore that I love to do. And but it's, I think it's time for a new chapter, and I just want to thank all of the residents of Lyon County and tell you what an honor it's been serving you. And if I am back for next meeting, something went very, very wrong. So but thank you guys very much.
I was just gonna say, you might not want to jinx yourself.
Well, they've they've already contacted me and told me I've got mandatory meeting next, next Thursday, next Thursday meeting, so.
Well, I'm making the assumption this is your last meeting, so. Anyways, not a lot happened since the last meeting, other than, you know, Nevada Day Parade, stuff like that, but not a lot county wise. So I don't feel that I have a whole lot to report on. I do want to make a quick announcement for anybody that it doesn't have something on the agenda at that time. Around 10:00 AM, Adam Laxalt will be coming through Yarrington, literally out the front door, take a couple steps to the left. For anybody that wants to go say hi. I don't feel that it's this position of this board to actually take time to go do that, but if somebody wants to run down there, just wanted to make sure everybody knew that he was going to be coming through. So County Manager, Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, and I'm County Manager for the record. Thanks, Commissioner Gray, for talking about the meeting that we had in Dayton last week. I was going to mention that in my report, but I thought it was a really good meeting that that did help to I think alleviate some of the concerns and clarify some of the correct some of the rumors, I guess, that are out there about. So I thought it was really productive. I'll keep it brief today. So the solid waste franchise, RFP, is now, has now been released. So that was live on our website yesterday, and it will be up there until January 5th. That's when the bids are due at five o'clock by the close of business. So hopefully we get some some good proposals on that. Still working on scheduling presentations. I know that has come up a few times, so I wanted to address it. I have contacted both the Bureau of Recognition and TCID about a presentation, and I'm still working with them on trying to nail that down. So stay tuned for that. I'm also still working to figure out that Forest Service request for Commissioner Hawkeye. So I will get that done. There'll be a presentation on the next board agenda from the Bureau of Land Management on projects and fire stuff, so stay tuned for that. And then also requested was the presentation from the new Smith Valley Fire Chief, and that will be on the next board agenda as well. We were successful in hiring a new senior planner, and so the new senior planner starts on Monday, so I look forward to introducing you to him. Pretty excited about this, so. It's really good. And then just wanted to mention again that we are still receiving applications for the emergency manager position. We hope to start scheduling the interviews for that next week. Maybe we would reach out and start scheduling next week, not interviews next week. So so anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody, anybody hasn't.
Any questions?
Just how many applications do we have for the emergency management?
So far, I want to say there's eight.
Oh, great.
Yeah. Yeah, so pretty, pretty good applicant pool there. So we're pretty excited about that.
So just out of curiosity, speaking of applications on the senior planner, that how many applications we end up getting on that?
Oh, geez. I don't remember the exact number.
So that was more than two or three because you don't remember, right?
Yeah, yeah, it was. I want to say it was five to seven.
Okay, well, I was just curious what the response was.
Yeah.
At the end. Okay. Well, it just means we're not getting a bad response, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You got off easy this morning. Okay, what time is it? Okay, so I'm going to go to elected official reports. Do I have any elected officials in the room? Mr. Sheriff.
Frank kind of off of the record, a couple of quick announcements. We had a very successful last couple of weeks in terms of trunk or treats. We were able to attend probably in a close proximity to about 10 different events throughout the county. It was nice to see the number of kids out and supporting those events. All the littles just kept coming, no matter where you were. Spectacular. I heard last night there was like 2,000 people went through that one. Stagecoach, there was probably two or 300 kids went through that one. Yarrington was the same thing. Smithville was the same thing. So it was nice to see those events kick off and all in positive manner. So that was on that note, I'd like to, from the sheriff's office, we'd like to throw a very public welcome to Walmart, Big R, Rayleigh's, and all those places that donated us like a whole truckload of candy. So that's very appreciative. So those were good. So now we're going to gear up for our Shop With A Cough program. So we're going to start, that's tentatively scheduled for December 17th. Inferno at Walmart. We haven't confirmed that date yet, but that's that's a tentative date. So we're starting a fundraising campaign to raise money, and hopefully our goal is to meet or exceed the goal we had last year. We got to take 33 kids, so that's our target audience for this year. So if you guys know anybody that wants to contribute to that, just send their donations to the sheriff's office, and I'll make sure that it goes in the right, right spot. So we've got Academy graduation on the 10th of November at 1:00 at the Brewery Arts Center in Carson City. We've got two people graduating Academy. Just go around. We've got four more going to Academy in January. And we've got five other individuals that are in some various stages of patrol FTO that should be coming off by the first of the year. So that's additional, potentially seven more people added to the streets of Long Island. So that's more, three or four more people in background. So the outlook is getting better in terms of personnel on the street. We've been extremely busy. Lot of traffic accidents across the county, not just on Highway 50 in the last couple of weeks. Weather's changing, so some of that's probably going to change, too. And I just want to say thank you to all of you guys, City Council, firmly, and to all my staff for showing up to work every day and doing the best we can do for our God. So other than that, I don't have anything. Unless you have questions.
Questions for the sheriff. Commissioner Gray.
Sheriff, what was that date and time of the graduation again?
The 10th at 1:00 at the Brewery Arts Center in Carson City. The address is escaping.
That's what we think. We know where it is.
The 10th of November or December?
November.
November. Any other questions for Sheriff, anyone? Thank you. Any other elected official reports? Nothing today, Steve?
Nothing today.
Okay. Not seeing anything online. Appointed official reports. Do we have any appointed officials today?
I just.
Already have you?
Amanda texted me while I was sitting there. We had 10 applications for the senior planner position.
Oh, thank you.
I wanted to provide an update.
Well, that's, that's a pretty good number.
Yeah.
Yeah, beats the days that we were lucky to get one or two. Oh, no. Mr. Foley.
And he's smiling.
He is smiling. So I don't know if that's a good smile or is that a bad smile?
He's up to something.
There we always.
Josh Foley, for the record. Just wanted to inform the board that we've received our consolidated tax distributions for July and August as of this point. One component of that is real property transfer tax. Whenever someone sells or buys a piece of property in Lyon County, goes to the recorder's office, there's a tax levied on that transaction. That is down approximately 40% over prior year, the same period July and August. What that means to the county is approximately oh, $320,000, $330,000 worth of revenue at the current rate that we budgeted for, that we're not going to receive. If that's the case, if it continues to decline instead of staying at that 40% level, we're going to we're going to see a significant maybe, you know, four or 500,000, $600,000 decrease. And that's a leading indicator for the sales tax usually, because when the real property transfer tax decreases, usually that means that homes start to decrease that are being built, and those builders, all the taxes they pay on the product that they put into the home starts to decline, so our sales tax revenue starts to go down. So just so you're aware, we have some clouds on the horizon for revenues as we go forward. We'll keep an eye on it and and let the board know. That's another reason why we're very cautious. We'll continue to see times like this and try not to spend too much time in the real world. That's all.
Well, it was bad news, but it wasn't unexpected news. So being in the real estate business, I have already seen that decline. My my revenues are declining, too. Anybody in my business. So yeah, I kind of was afraid of that. We was going to go that other direction, so. Any questions for Mr. Foley, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Contingency, where are we at?
So we have approximately a million dollars in contingency left.
Okay.
So now, in theory, that doesn't really we don't use that to make a revenue, but we did budget for that as expenditure. So if we don't have enough revenue, that's kind of a buffer for this.
And and why do we start with?
I'll have to go look that up. I don't have. I'm thinking it's like 1.3 million.
That's kind of what's sticking in my head, but I just like to know where we're at.
There are a few items on contingency I haven't brought back to the board at this point to let them know, but similar to the last year at year end, when we got to the year end, we ordered vehicles back in August and September and didn't receive them. So they come out of the new year budget. Of course, we didn't budget for them in the new year. We budgeted for them in old year. We've got the cash to pay for them. We just have a budget there. And so we have, you know, probably $150,000 vehicles that timing wise would be used out of a contingency.
Any other question?
Thank you.
Just you I should say, I appreciate that 200 plus page fine print on your summary of our finances. I certainly didn't go through every line, but I was wondering what the bottom line was on all of that. I mean, I went to the last page and looked, but is there something that we need to know from that summary?
So from the prior fiscal year, we're still finishing the books up from that time period, making sure we have all the receivables that have come through, all the cables booked, and then getting those audited. So I will be bringing back the second meeting in December, that information to you. We had a good year to last fiscal year, so that's the takeaway from last fiscal year for the current fiscal year. Couple of items like the vehicles that we have, the the revenues, we're taking a look at seeing some of those starting to decline. So but on the expenditure side, really only a handful of items are concerned at this point. Food or purchasing food for like senior centers and Food or purchasing food for like senior centers and for the jail and then of course fuel. And then a little bit of general inflation on other items that we purchased, so we'll keep an eye on those. But overall, we're trending fairly well for this fiscal year as far as staying within our contingency and within our budget. Budget plus contingency, but that can change very quickly as we go through.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Thank you.
Again, appointed officials, anybody else? Y'all being quiet today. All right, seeing none, how about advisory board reports? Still quiet. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Action will be taken on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Looks like we are twelve, eight to sixteen B, short consent agenda. So any requests to poll anything or? No, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda twelve A through sixteen B.
Second.
I don't even need a vote. Anyways, any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Okay, seventeen A for possible action to approve the request from Sierra Range Consultants for a conditional use permit for an outdoor shooting range and accessory uses including an eighteen thousand square foot building and sporting clay archery ranges generally located to two miles south of US Highway fifty and accessed by Micro Avenue and Stagecoach on three parcels with a total area of approximately three hundred and ninety-two point four seven acres. APNs zero one five dash five two one dash seventeen, zero one five dash five two one dash twenty-five, zero one five dash five twenty-one dash twenty-six, PLZ twenty twenty-two dash one seven five.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lewis. Senior Planner.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if I was sneezing, I meant to say good morning.
It's fine, I'm surprised to be up so quickly.
Ah, good morning.
Through this. We're here to present a special, I mean a conditional use permit for Sierra Range Consultants for three parcels that are located in Stagecoach approximately two miles south of Highway fifty. On this image and in the staff report, you'll see the access to the property along Micro Avenue. Micro Avenue predominantly runs through BLM lands. The first half mile is within county jurisdiction and sort of transitions from us, an existing subdivision into BLM land at Per Avenue. Oh, and I might also add, the applicants work on Micro Avenue has already begun, so they've begun grading and working on paving Micro Avenue to provide access to this property. It is through BLM land, so the authorization is through BLM. The three subject parcels are shown here, both in dimensions and configuration. The largest is approximately three hundred and thirteen acres, the others, the other two on the order of forty acres each for a total of three hundred and ninety-two plus acres. You might recall seeing some of these images, both in the staff report and in this presentation from the zone change we went through for this property a few months ago. The most notable geographic feature being a boxed canyon displayed easily here by our county's GIS system with ten foot contours. The two points noted within that three hundred and thirteen acre parcel are represent over four hundred and forty feet of elevation change. This oblique view from Google Earth shows Highway fifty there to the north of the parcel, Micro Avenue accessing the site. And then in the tent to sort of box the area proposed for the gun range. As you might imagine, Fox Canyon does provide the sort of visual and sound barriers that, that are probably expected for the use, and in this case conveniently provided by the geography. This is a different view of, of the Fox Canyon, in this case looking sort of due west up the canyon, so that's Highway fifty there on the right, Micro Avenue below. At this point, oh, I apologize, we'll run through the, the land use and zoning. The master plan for the site is resource, and as previously alluded to, the zoning was recently changed to resource land consistent with the master plan. Per the existing zoning of resource lands, a conditional use permit is required for outdoor shooting ranges, sporting clay ranges and archery ranges. At this point, the applicant is purposely pursuing the shooting range. The provisions within the staff report addressing future uses for sporting clay ranges and archery ranges are stated to be something that would be designed in the future, but is not actually contemplated at this point. At this point, I will turn it over to Representative Martin Carson for the applicant. Good morning.
Good morning.
Martin Carson, originate architecture, or is that representative of Sierra Range Consultant? This is a project description, it's in your packet based on the presentation. Sorry, Lewis, and so you can go to the next slide. Oh, I do have the clicker, sorry, that's my bad. Shown here are all three project sites with proposed locations of shooting bays and buildings. I'll zoom in a little bit on the next slide. Parcel O two six is where the buildings will be, so we're not crossing those partial lines. Their shooting ranges are in green, the start of those. That the largest green rectangle that you see there is a two hundred yard base. The future archery range and future sporting clays range will be further up into the Fox Canyon when that occurs. The buildings that has proposed elevation of the accessory building, there will actually be an onsite range safety officer that will be there twenty-four hours, Sunday's week. The other portion of that, other small structure that you see there is what they call the shoot house, which is a training tool for military and also for municipal agencies such as police, sheriff's offices, that kind of thing, they can set up that facility in scenarios and have training there. We had a great meeting with the Stagecoach Advisory Board meeting in September. Unsolicited, we had two four H groups show up in support of our project. They're looking for a local area to shoot safely, so that was very exciting to see. Had a, had a great meeting there. One of the items that had come up, previous commission meeting where we were talking about the rezoning and also came up there was in regards to the sound and potential sound mitigation. The interesting thing about this particular site, I'll go back to where the, the start of the shooting ranges are. At the shooting position, it was, is in the bottom of the canyon there towards the points of those parcels. That location sits about twenty feet lower than the access to get up on the micro road, so we're kind of in a little bit of a dish there. Along with the four hundred and forty feet of things. We had the client start, because as part of the conditional use permit will be an actual sound study for the project. The, we've already started some of those preliminary sound studies to be below the seventy-five decibel, seventy decibel ranges, the good news there is the preliminary studies, not even a half a mile down Micro Avenue are at the forty decibel show. Feel pretty comfortable about that, the reason where the nearest house is a mile and a half away is because the BLM land is in between those two things. One of the other things that came up during the planning mission hearing was in regards to shot mitigation, we wanted to know a bit more about that. So we went ahead and took site section at the longest bay, which is the two hundred yard bay that you can see there on the screen. From the placement of the shot for the person that would be shooting to the two hundred yard bay, there's another two hundred and fifty feet of backstop above that with the mountain range there. The good example in, for our region, there's two other ranges that would be comparable. There's one in Washington County on the highway, they also have a two hundred and fifty foot backstop with their mountain natural topography. And then Carson City is actually a couple of hundred fifty, so we're consistent with what's going on. Any other questions?
Any questions?
When's it open?
As soon as we can get started with construction.
And actually, this may be too soon, but actually I do have a couple of real quick questions. It's going to be a private club, open to the public.
Be open to the public, there will be a fee because there clearly will be some of this full time.
I like the shoot house, I'll pay for the shoot house.
Exactly, and we have, and Ken Crawford, who's the owner, is rep from Sierra Range Consultants is on the Zoom. I don't know if Ken wants to speak to any of that, that particular item, Ken?
You're on mute.
There you go.
I'm better with guns than computers, guys, I appreciate you. Yeah, so there'll be, it'll be open to the public, there'll be membership and drop in fees as well. The, the shoot house would be coordinated through, you know, instructional classes or the primary usage is for military and law enforcement, but if there's other instructors that, you know, wanted to rent it and had, you know, the actual credentials to be able to run that kind of class and insurance to be able to do it, then we'd allow that as well.
But there might actually be one sitting on this board.
Perfect, so the, the more people that can use the facility, the better, obviously for us and for the community. But yeah, we're, we're hoping to get started within, you know, weeks of approval is the goal.
It's going to be a great addition, also hopefully cut down on some of our, you know, fire, you know, do some fire mitigation there, fire risk mitigation.
Yeah, so we, we have a water truck on site right now, but part of the, and Marty's better than this at me because he does buildings, but part of the mitigation is there'll be like a water holding tank and stuff like that, obviously we'll be clearing out all of the sagebrush and stuff that can catch fire in the bay, that's part of the, the grading effort and site cleanup.
Yeah, and I was referring more to the people having a place to go that was safer than just being out in, on BLM land shooting and, you know, shooting indiscriminately. So leave a place to go to actually shoot.
Yeah, and we, when, you know, when we were looking for the site, we, we currently have the, the Mustang Range in Fernley, which it's kind of encroached upon, which led us to, to this site. And when we went out there, we saw that there's a, a large amount of, you know, brass and shells already all over the ground out there. So it looked to be, you know, the natural shooting spot to begin with, so we're hoping to just, like you said, clean it up and make it better for everyone.
Thanks, Ken.
Any other questions?
Ken, can you please state your full name for the record?
It's Kenneth Crawford.
Thank you. Sure, how many comments?
No, it's good to me.
I only have one comment, I think this has been a long time coming. I mean, I, I know the citizens in Lyon County and especially in the central corridor have talked about getting a shooting range. I mean, not that we don't go shoot in the desert already, but an actual official shooting range for many years. You know, I've lived there for over twenty-eight years in Silver Springs, and I've been hearing it probably that long. So like I said, long time coming, I think it's going to be great. So with that being said, can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item seven A as presented.
Seventeen, seventeen A.
Seventeen, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, seventeen A and second, okay, so now I'm going to go to public comment, do we have anybody for public comment? Amanda Bernard.
Good morning, Amanda Bernard, B R I N N A N D. And I think a shooting range is a wonderful idea to concentrate shooting in one area, and I'm very glad to see that they are doing the noise studies as that was. A big concern of mine is hearing guns going off eight hours a day, seven days a week as compared to the occasional guns we have now. So I am very happy to see that they are doing the sound studies and that they won't be exceeding the seventy-five DBA at their property line. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Go build it.
Build it and we will come.
Thank you.
Okay, seventeen B for possible action to approve the request from Granite Construction for a conditional use permit to expand the footprint of an existing sand extraction and screening operation that crosses the Washoe County line in the north Lyon County. Generally located north of Fernley in Wadsworth, approximately point one five miles east of Nevada Route four twenty-seven on three parcels with a total area of approximately seventy-one point eight three acres. APNs zero two one dash five seven one dash ten, zero two one dash five seventy-one dash eleven, zero two one five seventy-one dash twelve, PLZ twenty twenty-two dash one seven seven. Carriola.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lewis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting on behalf of Lyon County. Granite Construction's request for a conditional use permit. The subject parcels on the Lyon County side are, well, there's three parcels on the Lyon County side. The existing use crosses the line into Washoe County. This image shows the full delineation of all the parcels on both sides of the county line. It's notable that the sand mining and sifting does not occur on the entirety of the parcels. The total area of the three Lyon County parcels is just over, is over seventy-one acres. And I sort of just boxed here the existing operation. You'll note Highway four twenty-seven there and, and the use is just east of Wadsworth. The subject parcel zoning is rural residential, fifth rural residential district from the expired Title X and is subject to our current development code, rural residential twenty acre minimum, which would require a conditional use permit for sand extraction operation. The current use functions under a previously Lyon County issued special use permit. The terms are identical to a conditional use permit, special use permit was under Title X. Just as a new use that would require a conditional use permit would require public hearing and approval, expansion of an existing special use permit or conditional use permit likewise requires another approval. The findings for the, for the conditional use permit are found within the staff report. I do know that Tina Mudd is here online, I believe, and we have another applicant representative if you needed a presentation on the actual use, if you don't, I'm happy to just kind of move forward here. All right, I think I can take that as a cue. Notably, the gated entrance and the general footprint of this use not expanding at all. There's no proposal to expand the hours, there's no proposal to install lighting, nothing that would be more impactful to adjacent properties other than a simple expansion of the sand extraction operation. Current disturbance on this, on the site is approximately twenty-three acres. The proposed disturbance about forty-three acres, meaning this is a simple expansion of about twenty acres. I won't run through the findings, I, I think I already kind of mentioned why there are no recognized impacts in adjacent properties. The planning commission did recommend the votes of this body, seven to zero, their regularly scheduled over eleven twenty twenty-two meeting, I did correct a typo in the original motion, the staff report. With that available for any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Carroll? No questions? Kind of get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approve.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approved a request by Granite Construction to to extend the footprint of a sand extraction and screening operation based on the findings and subject to the conditions as listed in the staff report, second.
You have a motion in a second, further discussion? Hey, a public comment? Seeing none, all in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. You didn't think you were gonna get off this easy today, right? Yeah.
He's not done yet.
Oh, no, he's not, he's staying right there. Seventeen C for possible action to approve a zoning map amendment request from Aaron Inc. on a three point two nine acre parcel generally located approximately four hundred feet north of the U S Highway ninety five A slash Fifth Avenue intersection sixty eight fifty South U S Highway ninety five A in Silver Springs from C one Limited Commercial District to H M U R Highway Mixed Use A P N seventeen dash one thirty three dash eleven, P L Z twenty twenty two dash one eighty two.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Louis Carriola, Senior Planner. I'm just introducing the applicant's representative today. I can report that staff was able to find that the proposed zone change was consistent with the master plan and that the planning commission recommended seven zero at their October eleven twenty twenty two meeting to approve the zone change. Now introduce the applicant representative.
For the record, Kenny Brown, the C F A, represent applicant for the Aaron property. The property is located approximately east side of ninety five A between Indigo Avenue and Fifth Avenue. Parcel to the north was recently approved for some changes to the same zone change as H M U dash R, October twenty twenty one. Some photos of the existing site. You can see that the frontage road that exists currently. And to the right, the the right photo, you can see how flat the property is viewed from west to east. The property currently is after planned mixed use, so we're requesting a change to an existing designation that conforms with master plan. In this case, we are allowed to request either personal mixed use, highway mixed use, rural mixed use. I'm forgetting the fourth one, employment mixed use, excuse me, or P D. In this case, we're requesting the similar, the same zoning change to H M U dash R. This will allow us to bring in performance with the existing properties to the north. This slide shows the property zoning, the existing and proposed, existing is on the left. It is currently zone C one, we are proposing that the property in question be zone two highway mixed use rule. There are three legal findings that we must we must find for for you to be able to prove this. We find that we can meet all three staff has has mentioned that they can find as well. It's running through really quickly, I know we have a time sensitive ten five, I'm sorry. In summary, most zoning map amendment is consistent with Lyon County master plan, zoning on common on parcel to the north. Future development, this parcel along seventeen point six acres to the north is expected to create a need for new parcel line. Consistency in zoning will allow for such future development and parcelization without creating splits on parcels. We agree with the staff's review, analysis and recommendation of approval for this requested zoning map amendment and believe that all funds that we made. If you have any questions, I'm available for that.
Any questions? I have question for Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
I have no problem with the the zone change itself, I actually have a language problem with the way that what's in the staff report. And, you know, and even looking at the legal findings under B. So what I'm referring to is page two of eleven of the staff report. It says access, access to the subject site currently would come directly from U S ninety five A. As the parcel currently has no alternative means of legal access. By us as the county stating that we do not control the access up in ninety five A. End dot, the state controls that. So by having that language in there, essentially, if the client was to read it word for word, the way it's in there, it's stating worse as the county, we're stating that they got access. I know for a fact there is no driveway access to this parcel up in ninety five A that's been issued by the state. So I have an issue with the language. Again, under the legal findings under B, right here in front of us, it says the site is currently conveniently serviced by the highway ninety five. Well, that doesn't mean it's legally serviced from ninety five. So I I have a language issue, I don't have an issue with the change in the zoning. So what I want to know is can we change the language?
I I think as you're aware, I personally did not draft the staff report.
I understand and I'm not taking on you personally.
I understand and I'm not trying to to be defensive, just pointing it out, because I agree with you, I think that language is not really appropriate for findings for a zone change. My understanding of the ongoing development plans for the site is to improve the frontage road along ninety five A for future development.
Yeah, I'm fully aware of the intent.
I'm sorry.
I said, I'm fully aware of their intent and that's why they've got these other parcels. But still with this kind of language, I have an issue with the language. Putting that responsibility back on the county that we made a statement that this is being served by ninety five A when we can't make that call.
I I might suggest that just by having this discussion in the public record, that I don't know if we're allowed to say we can strike that language from the report, as you know, the zoning change can't be conditioned.
Can we ask for an understanding between us and the applicant? That they understand that we can't grant that access, that access has to come from the state.
Good record, Ken Brown, C F A, represent applicant. The applicant and C F A have been in discussion with Endot regarding access to this and we are in ongoing discussions with maintaining access and gaining access, legal access as your concern is. We realize we we cannot condition a zone change. But we are we are working forward to this if we can, let's see, if we can get to the right.
Well, I guess really all I'm asking is that you understand that we can't grant that access. That that's really where I'm going with it.
It's a discussion between us and Endot itself.
Exactly.
At the moment, the current iteration is on the screen that this is part of the discussion that we've been having with Endot. It calls for one full movement access and one right in only access to the property.
No, I appreciate, I I sure, good project, like I said, I'm not against the zone change by no means, I I'm more concerned about the the language, you know, so as long as we have an understanding that, you know, we can't grant that access. I think that'd be satisfactory for today.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that, guys, so any other questions, comments, motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item seventeen C as presented.
Second.
You have a motion, a second to approve, any further discussion? Public comment? Seeing any hands, nobody jumping up, all in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I'm sure I want to take a break here real quick and I'm gonna join by zoom for a little bit.
Okay, you're asking for a break for?
I'm going on a break, I mean, I'm just stepping away, I'll be on Zoom after.
Okay.
We time certain of ten.
Yeah, I'll be backing up and before we get to those. Yeah, I'm gonna take a short break for us, Ken's doing his thing. So we will be coming back to our ten A M certens as soon as we take a body break, so let's make, I just see our request for ten minute break, so. Okay, oh, there he is, okay, so please note that Commissioner Gray has zoomed in at this moment. So item six A, ten A M for a presentation only, Matt Martenson with the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company to give an update and presentation of the valve project with the community development block grant funding, sorry, I almost skipped a line there.
Good morning, Erin Lopez, C D B G Grant Administrator, we just wanted to thank Matt for coming in and giving a presentation. He was awarded funds last fiscal year, so he's just here to give the board an updated work he's at.
Mr. Martenson.
Good morning, Commissioners through Chairman, Chairman, Chairperson, Chairwoman, Chairperson.
The chair is fine.
Bye, Dad. Good to see you all. Oh, heck, so thank you, Erin, for the introduction. Yeah, Silver Springs Mutual Water Company was awarded a C D B G grant back in twenty twenty one. Just a little brief background to this project that was born out of an identified deficiency to our water system. Public water system was primarily constructed back in the fifties and was very inadequately fouled. And this caused a major health in risk to the community, health safety risk by means we'd have to at times shut down for operation maintenance activities and repair work and take out up to a hundred and seventy five connections at one time in every fire hydrant on the street. When that's not just good practice, so we identified, put this project together and presented and we were awarded and that was a godsend. So we had some issues, I guess this might challenge. We had some issues along the way with a hate even balloon in it, but COVID, of course, so we received our grant funding. We placed the order for all the materials and we were given a crazy lengthy lead time on to what it was gonna take for these, for us to take delivery on the materials. We we were finally able to make that, take that delivery, receive them all in March of twenty twenty two, which then directly thereafter I came into some issues with staffing and I was short on my field staff, which made it absolutely impossible to break ground on this project. Coming into July, we gained our staff back, we're fully staffed, we broke ground on this project in August. And so with the engineering, the acquisition of all the materials and breaking ground and up to this date, we've installed seventeen valves. We figure that we're roughly at overall project around fifty percent complete. We have an anticipated plan to be able to finalize this project by the end of June of twenty twenty three. So whether permitting, we're gonna continue our progress through the winter of installation of valves and hopefully all goes well. I just, like I said, we got seventeen valves on this project installed. I only brought a handful of pictures because they're all repeats, the the location changes, but it's all the same process. And we're just very grateful to have been able to receive this funding to make it possible. We're a little mutual cop that resides inside of Lyon County, but yeah, funding is limited and it's hard to do this kind of stuff, this made this possible to bring our system into better compliance with veteran by statutes and policies associated with water systems, water distribution system, so. Anyways, that's pretty much where we're at. And if there's any questions, you know, there's, I might as well plug that also. At the final completion, there's a little bit of money, there's a little over two thousand dollars left on the table for the project funding because it was a portion of materials and then the company was gonna do the perform the in kind portion of this project, so. The money left is to for the engineering to complete the project completion letter, which will be submitted to veteran Department Environmental Protection Bureau Safe Drinking Water as well as the C D B G grant people to close this project out, so hopefully all goes well and we're able to button it up by June of twenty twenty three.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I say you just write the letter and take the other money and to have a staff party for getting the job well done, good job.
Any other questions, comments? Keep up the good work.
Already signed in. Thank you all, have a good day.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, item six B for possible action, public hearing for community development block grant C D B G application presentations and to approve some middle of applications to the state.
Erin Lopez, for the record, just a quick update after eligibility was processed and then they gave us a notice of who was eligible. We only got two out of the five that were submitted. Their reply was that with some of the lower funding and they lower their scope of the projects that they wanted to fund because of that. So the, excuse me, the two applications that are moving forward is the housing needs assessments and the Mount House Community Center. We'll see you in the behind me, she'll present that one.
Hello, Glenn, Shaila Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services. The C D B G proposal that I am hoping for approval is a housing needs assessment for Lyon County. I just want to bring us back to the spectrum of housing. And we've talked about this before and I I think I've used this infographic before, but it is a spectrum. So you've got government assisted and subsidized housing on the left, all the way up to fair market value housing on the right and everything in between. And the hopes for this needs assessment is that we would end up with data and recommendations across the spectrum of housing, not just focusing on the low income or the subsidized side, but also on the fair market side as well. So here's some numbers, eight, eight four thousand three hundred and twenty shortage of low income homes in the state of Nevada. The state of Nevada is lacking a hundred and fifty nine thousand residences for its population. Nevada has twelve percent fewer homes than it needs to accommodate its population. And we have a twenty one point two housing opportunity index score, which essentially means that only twenty one percent of the areas homes sold in twenty twenty one would have been in the affordability range for a family earning the local median income. So that paints a pretty bleak picture for housing in the state of Nevada, their housing crisis is a nationwide buzzword or term. It's certainly an issue here in Nevada, but what does that mean for Lyon County? And the answer truly is, I don't know. I know that as the social services provider, we struggle to help low income families get an affordable home, be it through rent or through purchase, we struggle. We don't have the available units that we need to aid folks that are currently in our community. But in regards to these numbers, I really couldn't tell you what Lyon County is truly lacking when it comes to what do we need? Other data from state of Nevada, Nevada Housing Coalition shows things such as annual income, maximal affordability, which we know for a low income household, a thousand four hundred and forty one, based on a three bedroom person, that you're not finding something for rent and in that range, you're not even able to purchase something in that range right now, although the market's starting to come back down. So, but what does that mean for Lyon County again, we don't know. So Lyon County Human Services lacks the capacity to be able to generate that kind of data for Lyon County specifically. The other thing that I want to throw out there is that as of right now, if the four hundred plus B D Rs that are on the list, and we know that we only have what, the two to three lines that you get in the description right now, twelve of those B D Rs have housing in there. So we do know that the state is working on legislation to address the housing crisis. And where is that gonna fall when it comes to county entities? We don't know, there's rumor that some of the that one of these B D Rs is gonna require a housing needs assessment to be done, whether that makes it anywhere, what the traction is, whether that ends up being regional or not. There's another B D R in there that's gonna be recommending supportive housing, which is for individuals to have that temporary housing while they're working through behavior health crisis and are able to transition into low income housing. If that were to be something regionalized, we don't really have a number to stand on as far as what Lyon County should be responsible for. And that's the the standard that typically comes out in these things when you think of Winrick or other situations that we've been in the past with regional efforts is it's typically an assessment from the state or an amount that we have to pay and we don't have anything to base that on. So a housing needs assessment would prepare us for legislation changes. It would generate the local data and analysis and trends on all of those things. generate the local data and analysis and trends on all of those things that the state spacing these big numbers off of, but give us that information for us locally. Our current housing inventory across the spectrum from the left to the right, the housing costs, the growth projections, development activity, characteristics of the local workforce, including wage levels, and who might be priced out of the local market. It'll give us that accurate information for our communities and we could even when we go out to get a proposal from the different agencies. There's a variety of different specific companies that do housing needs assessments. We can even request that it be at a granular level by area, by city, by community, so we can get a better idea as far as what Lyon County's housing needs are and across the varying communities that we serve. The request through the CDBG funding opportunities for fifty thousand in the two different companies that I've spoken with. That's about what we would need to get a complete needs assessment for our area. And with that, I think that it's a good opportunity for us to get grant funding to pay for something that could potentially be an unfunded mandate on us. But then I'm open to question.
Any questions for Sheila? Good job. We have another one?
Yeah, the second project that Erin had talked about was the Mount House Community Center. We were, we had put in some eligibility for two hundred thousand dollars to go towards that project. And so the board agrees to move forward with that, that's
So any questions on that one? So you just need a motion to approve the two, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, motion please.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
I done asked you if there was questions.
Well, it says that we can approve two Lyon County applications and two others.
The state rejected the others.
Okay.
So we only have the two on the table.
So the digital sign and that's.
They rejected, yeah.
And that.
And that's a whole nother subject. Please don't get me started.
In that case, Madam Chair, I move that we approve submitting community development block grant applications for housing needs assessment plan and for the Mount House Community Center.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ken, did you vote? Okay, so please take note that Commissioner Gray is says he's online, but he's not really. So the vote is four to zero. With one commissioner absent. Hey, I've done all of those.
Seventeen D.
Yeah, it's got flip pages here.
I know, right?
Okay, so now we're moving back into plan, public hearing on planning items. Seventeen D to approve a zoning map amendment request from thirty thirty fifty LLC and Bowers USA LLC on five parcels with a total size of thirteen point seven five acres generally located northwest of the intersection of US Highway fifty and US Highways four thirty nine with access from Bowers Avenue and Opel Avenue in Silver Springs. From RR three, third rural residential district, five acre minimum, and M one general industrial district to S one service industrial, APM zero one eight three seven one fourteen and zero one eight three seven one twenty, zero one eight three seven one twenty one, zero one eight three seventy one twenty two, zero one eight three seventy one twenty three, PLZ twenty twenty two dash one eight three. Wow, Mr. Carriola, that was a mouthful.
Was. Thank you, Madam Chair, Lewis Carriola, Senior Planner, simply reporting on the planning commission action on October eleventh, two thousand and twenty two. The planning commission did forward a recommendation seven zero to this body to approve the zone change. And now I'll turn it over to the applicant representative from CFA.
Okay, same presentation, different location. Good morning. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Kenny Brown with CFA, Representative Appkit. The project location is located north of Highway fifty and east of USA Parkway at the confluence of those two roads. Five, five parcels total thirteen point seven five acres. We're is this some site photos? I'm sure you all know the one in the upper left is an old lap day tree market. The applicant what be correct, excuse me, be prepared to remove the lap day buildings to prepare the land for development in the in the future. The other photo show the relative location flatness desirable as everyone. Currently, property master plan is employment and the allowed uses on that are light industrial, heavy industrial, service industrial, employment mixed use, adult oriented, and a PUD. We are requesting service industrial. Currently, the zoning on the properties are mixed bag from RR three to the M one zoning. We're requesting that the service industrial be approved to bring the properties into conformance with master plan. We have three legal findings to show. We have met them. As Louis has mentioned, planning commission recommended that approval of this zone change was a seven oh last one. We agree with staff's review, analysis and recommendation for approval for this requested zoning map amendment and believe that all findings can be made. If you have any questions, I'm.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
A motion to approve seventeen D as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and second, any further discussion, how to comment? You guys will be a weight to quite today. Any hands? I don't see any. Okay, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? For an eye from Ken. Wow, you finally chimed in. Okay. Please note that Commissioner Gray is paying attention again. The vote is five to zero.
Thank you, ma'am chair, Commissioners.
Okay, seventeen E to approve a zoning map amendment request from A RUP on four parcels with a total size of approximately two hundred and forty three acres generally located north of US Highway fifty, one mile west of the intersection of US Highway fifty and US Highway ninety five A from RR five, fifth rural residential district, twenty acre minimum, and C one limited commercial district to S one service industrial APMs, zero one five, one forty one, zero five, one zero one five, one forty one, zero six, zero one five, one forty one, zero seven, and zero one five, one forty one, twelve, PLZ twenty twenty two dash one eight four. Mr. Carriola.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lewis Carriola, Senior Planner. Once again, at the October eleventh, two thousand and twenty two planning commission meeting. Commission elected forward a recommendation for approval, voting unanimously seven zero. I'll introduce now Stacy Huggins from Wood Rogers to make the applicant's presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Stacy Huggins with Wood Rogers for the record, representing the applicant, Erin.
Just want to note, it's been a while since I've seen you. Back engaged.
I know, it's been a very long time.
It has.
To you. I'm going to just be very quick. As Louis mentioned, the planning commission did recommend approval of this request. So I will just kind of very briefly touch on this zone change request on this property in Silver Springs. It is approximately two hundred and forty three acres on the north side of Highway fifty, directly north of the airport property. Right smack in the middle. You can see on the exhibit on the screen is the BLM actually owns that parcel, but N dot is leasing that parcel. So for those of you that know that that's an N dot use piece, it's actually owned by BLM. It is not part of the request for the zone change. The rest of the area outlined in blue is part of or is the, are the parcel subject to the change. Just a couple of pictures of what the property looks like from a couple of different viewpoints. The one on the top is looking north, northeast at the property. That's the frontage road there that you see on the picture and then a couple site, a couple photos looking looking south from the east property line and then looking southeast into the site. And really, I just included those to show that this property is topographically fairly flat. So it's, you know, appropriate for future development as I may come forward. The master plan on this property is employment currently. You can see on the table on the bottom, there are several more intense uses that are associated with that employment master plan designation, which is typically for research and development uses, light industrial facilities that would be appropriate for warehouse and distribution type uses under that employment master plan designation. So as part of our request, we are asking to go to service industrial, which you can see there is highlighted as an appropriate zoning category under the employment master plan designation. Again, the mask or the current zoning is RR five with a couple of parcels that are zone C one. And so just for a comparison here, the image on the left is the existing zoning reflecting that residential designation. And then on the right, the proposed zoning reflecting the area that would change to service industrial. I included this slide just so you could see if the service industrial zoning is approved. There's a number of uses that are permitted and I didn't include anything that would require a CUP, but obviously if that was something a future developer wanted to bring forward, it would have to meet the standards of the current title fifteen under the service industrial uses. So just kind of in summary, you know, the proposed zoning is more appropriate adjacent to the airport, residential across the way from an airport. It's not the best in terms of compatibility. So service industrial is a, is a better compatible zoning designation. I mentioned earlier what types of uses might be there, light manufacturing, distribution, warehouse, concentrated area for employment opportunities in the Silver Springs area. Future development adjacent to the airport that could create additional synergy for the airport and that area and future development at the airport itself. And then just in terms of the surrounding area and if the site is developed, it will have to include buffering to address the residential adjacency that exists around this site. That is our request in a very high level nutshell. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for seconds? Okay, and if we can please note that Commissioner Gray is now back in chambers. So.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve seventeen E as presented.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so we finally ended all of Mr. Carriola's.
Our work.
But wait, that's not all. There's more. Get a free second soon, eyes.
See, that was painless, right? He's smiling. Okay, County Manager, eighteen A to review and set the qualifications, duties and salary of the public health officer and to discuss and provide direction to staff on whether to advertise for the position of public health officer. And this was requested by me, was on our last agenda and was requested to move to this agenda for further discussion. So, Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, interim county manager for the record. Yeah, so you will remember at the last meeting, I was asked to bring back some more information regarding the duties and qualifications of the the public health officer. And so I couldn't recall where I'd read it and we talked about possibly NRS or NIC. NRS didn't have anything new include that I hadn't already included as backup. But I did take a look at county code and I probably should have done, I definitely should have done this from the start. So county code does have layout the county health officer, what the appointment and qualifications are. It talks about how the board sets the compensation rate, vacancy, and then essentially the duties of the, the county health officer are that, that that position serves as the executive of the public health board. And then the duties of the public health board are laid out in county code. So the public health officer essentially oversees all those. So with that, given that the duties and the qualifications are in county code, it would take an ordinance to change that if we wanted to do that. So essentially today, what is on the table is to talk about wages that the wage rate for that and whether or not we want to take it out for advertisement.
Questions from the board? Suggestions, considerations from the board?
Well, just reading through the, you know, three point eleven point oh six, you know, there's things that definitely need to be changed on the verbiage. But it does say here the term of office for two years and will continue until successor has been appointed. Yet there is a little contradiction. It says it's going to be done by the fifteenth of January. So I think we need to clear up some of that language just in the future. And also it says he, he, his term, I'm not trying to be woke here, but normally it's the applicant. We do need to make some changes to this. I'm sure it's been written for many, many, many years, but just looking through it, I was not happy with the way it was written and the contradiction in it. As far as compensation, looking at all the other packages, you more or less see that some of the other counties are paying a lot more than we have in the past and based on the possibility that it could be a five or six hour per month job and current Dr. Titus is requesting two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. We'd have to look at, you know, five to six hours a month, possibly more and weigh those things if we are going to go out for a bid. And you've got to look at what we have currently versus what it could be, a couple thousand dollars a month. That's just, you know, my, my looking through and reading everything. I don't know if anybody else has the same opinions, but.
Well, and I had a couple of thought processes. It's just a matter of, you know, whether you go out to bed or advertise. We can either set a rate here that we don't want to exceed because we know, well, we just heard from Josh this morning that we're going to be lacking funds that we thought we were going to have. So we can set that rate or we can literally go out to bid. And I was also curious about maybe even we're part of the quad counties. So maybe looking into who serves the other counties as well. I mean, there might be something where we can do a partnership with another county, which we've done a lot of times on things like this, you know, as far as the quads are concerned. Things have changed over the years from when they originally started off in the eighties doing this. And the purpose of me putting this, asking for this to be put on the agenda was really to educate the board. And this was coming up again in January of two thousand and twenty three. And I don't think anybody on this board, other than maybe Ken, getting, you know, hey, here's the new contract approve or deny and, and no background, not even the ordinance. I had never seen the ordinance before. I've been around a while, didn't even realize that I've never seen it, didn't know where to find it in code. And so that was interesting for me to see. And I agree with Commissioner Hockaday. Not that we have to change the language in it today, but we might want to do a little cleanup on it for the future. So anyway, so you know, whether we just negotiate a new contract with the existing health officer or to go out to bid or even inquire with the other counties. I just wanted options out there for this board. In January, I'm, I won't be on this board. So it's kind of up to you guys what you, what your thoughts are.
Commissioner Jacobson, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am chair. For starters, I see Dr. Titus is here. Thank you for the many years at discounted price. the many years at discounted price. Um, that is greatly appreciated. Um. And looking through these other contracts, I don't know that we're gonna find it any cheaper. I I think awarding it for two hundred and fifty dollars an hour today would be handling county business, but uh I think if we put it out to bed, it we run the risk of costing the county even more money. Um, but again, I do want to thank uh Dr. Titus and and I don't know that I needed an education on this uh on the agenda. Um, but uh I do know that sometimes we put things on the agenda that cost county money, and I think this is one of them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Henderson and then Commissioner Gray, please.
Um, but thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Dr. Titus, I also want to thank you for your long service to the county. It certainly appreciated and uh you've been doing it for quite a quite a discount. Um, as far as the ordinance or the duties, I think, you know, they are in existence now. They've been in existence. So I don't think we need to do that. I do think uh we might need to discuss compensation. You know, Dr. Titus in her letter said so a person of her experience and and education and expertise, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Four to six hours a week, six hours, that'd be fifteen hundred dollars a month. I'm probably might can can apply for a home county discount, maybe go on a feature. I I'd like to, you know, just, you know, my thoughts are somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. Yeah, and I personally do not see the need to go out and advertise. Dr. Titus is willing to continue to do this job. She's done the job for a long time and done it well. So I think what we really need to do is just give Dr. Titus a raise and move on. That's my thoughts.
Commissioner Gray.
Yeah, I'm I'm kind of in agreement with both the uh the prior commissioners have spoken on this as well. Um, I think uh negotiating a a new rate and going on for two years, but as a stipulation, going back, reviewing the ordinance, reviewing, you know, everything else and maybe working towards something in two years, uh especially, you know, the quad counties concept. I know a neighbor of mine had an issue um a few years ago, uh had a bat show up uh in his clinic. He's a veterinarian and uh wanted to have it tested for rabies and stuff and just if actually he finally wanted to pay to have it done himself and the bat was rabid. Um, so there are things that slip through the uh slip through the uh the cracks, but um I think we need to tighten up everything and I don't believe that Dr. Titus is asking anything unreasonable. She has many years of service um at a very, very discounted rate, but um I think we do need to tighten it up and and maybe look at next time, you know, maybe sending it out or doing whatever we need to do, but the whole the whole situation needs to be cleaned up and that's kind of what this board and you know, has been trying to do is clean things up, make it more transparent and bring it before the public. I mean, it's and like Commissioner Keller had said. Yeah, I think we it had been actually on a consent agenda in years past where we never even looked at it, never had the chance to re- review the ordinance or anything like that. Not that we had to because we know it was in in good hands, but I think it's time that, you know, that we do that.
So out of all of that, does somebody want to make a motion that goes in one of those directions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion um that we uh and I guess the easiest way to do it would be to extend uh Dr. Titus' contract for two years at her requested rate um with the stipulation that county staff immediately begin working on uh working on the ordinance, bringing back the ordinance uh for changes and approval.
Second.
Got Mr. Foley.
Oh, Josh, got to get up there. The money man.
Josh Foley, I ain't going to come full up the record. Since NRS doesn't allow you to make a motion outside of budget without identifying resources, would you be uh amenable to changing or adding the five thousand dollars worth of contingency funds be allocated to?
That's right. And actually, can I ask Dr. Titus a real quick question? Ma'am, do you want to be, do you want to go by hourly or would you prefer like a thousand dollar a month stipend, please?
Thank you, because I was just getting ready to ask about the motion because she's never had to document the hours.
And that's kind of.
And to not have to document hours, it might be easier.
Right. So I again, Robin Titus, um Dr. Robin Titus, your current county health officer. Um, and thank you all for that good discussion and invite. I want to thank you actually for bringing this to the forefront. Um, although again, we may disagree on why and and how it needed to be done. I appreciate the comment about in the future. I also suggest that um we're looking at a Claude County possible health district. There's legislation in the forefront that may put that out, that counties can do all of that. So it's kind of a moving target. So I agree with that. Thinking forward that things need to be cleaned up and what will happen. Um, I I would prefer a salary as opposed to hourly. My letter was just to give you a reference on what that typical, if somebody came in and gave you an hours of their time with my background, that's typically what would be charged, sometimes more, sometimes less. So I would prefer salary wage, although I'm happy to document, show all those hours that I do put in. Um, but however, whatever works best for the board and I appreciate all the fine comments.
So do you more often put in five hours or four hours or three hours? And what's your average, you think?
It depends. Uh, Shayla's here. It depends on whether we have our uh board of health meetings that then that could be a couple of hours and that throws it all off, you know?
I'm trying to try and tie the salary to it though.
Right, exactly right. So um, you know, compensation is 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 important. And again, as I've said before, I did this because I felt it was my civic duty, knowing all along that I did it because it was the right thing to do for Lyon County, bringing it up to stage that's been brought out. Um, I I would prefer a set rate uh of compensation on a monthly basis again. Um, and I don't want to break the bank, but I do feel that a reasonable compensation is two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Um, and if you say an average of four hours, that'd put it a thousand dollars a month. And then some months I don't do that, some months I do more. So I think that's a reasonable position to be in.
So you 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 think a thousand dollars a month is is reasonable?
I think it will come to fruition that it's probably about that, right? More, there'll be months where it is more time that I put in, but I'm also willing to do that because I really feel there's going to be a transition on what the health officer does in a health district over the next couple of years.
Just fully a question for you. So where does where does the uh the money come from now? Is it contingency?
We currently have two hundred dollars a month budgeted out of the general fund under the public health function.
Okay, so pull the uh.
So we would need uh for forty-eight hundred dollars from contingency in the general fund to do a thousand dollars a month contract. The remainder of this.
So I'm going to, Madam Chairman, I'm I'm in my uh motion to uh do the salary um of a thousand dollars a month with contingency of forty-eight hundred dollars uh coming into argument for the rest of fiscal year.
My second stands.
Okay, and um we had so much discussion. I just want to make sure that that motion also because the way you said that, that includes that over the period of time in the next two years to do some cleanup and.
Hopefully sooner than that. Yeah, that was as soon as possible kind of thing. So we don't uh so it's not under, nobody's under pressure to do it in two years.
So I have a motion in a second. So um, public comment? Seeing no hands, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So Dr. Titus, you're buying lunch?
Actually, I thank you for your time and uh I have a meeting in Carson City, so I'm going to be leaving. So thank you very much.
Nineteen for possible action, approving modified subrecipient agreement for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand two hundred with the Boys and Girls Club at Mason Valley, whereby Lyon County provides funding towards the EL wagon, early girls, early learning. Boy, I keep wanting to skip lines today, center and its operations to come from the American Rescue Plan Act funding. I have difficulties with that one, sorry.
Josh Foley, I ain't done any. The board is previously the board is previously allocated allocated this amount of funding towards the uh to the Boys and Girls Club. What this would do, the amendment would allow them to use it for operational costs as well, not just construction costs. They ran into some challenges because of the how strict the federal guidelines are on procurement. And so they'd like to use it for operational salaries and supplies and things like that. And this proposed change will.
Questions for Mr. Foley? Motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve item nineteen A as presented. Second.
Further discussion? Public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, agenda request? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to um see if we can get the BLM back out here. You know, we had our meeting and I believe it was Silver Springs and they gave a presentation. They said they'd be more than happy to come back every three months or so. And they haven't, and I think it's time for us to invite them to come back.
They're actually on the next agenda.
Can we just take the interim office title now?
Uh, Commissioner Gray, I don't believe you uh get to.
I don't think it matters at all. I'm going to miss you guys.
Do you have a request that you would like us to discuss on your behalf?
Or ignore it. Um, yeah, actually, yes, I would. Uh, traffic safety and the Highway fifty corridor. And I have a sent a request to N dot as well to uh put together our next town hall. Like I said, we're going to have one in six months and we're going to do it and find out what they've done and accomplished in that timeframe. And uh, what's going on? Sorry. Well, yeah, they've got.
So Andrew, I'm going to tag on to that. My access management, basically the same thing. Um, let's let's figure out what we can do to get them engaged. I I know we've had a lot of changeover in that, but we need the new people to get engaged. We we can't suffer because they can't figure out what they're doing. Um, Commissioner Jacobson? Commissioner Hockaday?
Well, I do have a couple, but they're kind of set up for scheduling in the future and uh uh county manager is working on setting the agenda items into this, into the uh schedule later. So I'm good to go.
Okay. Do we have a closed session today?
Yes, we do.
You just ruined a perfectly good day.
Yes, you did.
Making me growl up here. Anyways, all right. Um, so that's going to take us to our final public participation. So do I have anybody that would like to participate publicly before we adjourn the meeting and go to closed session?
Commissioner comments?
Twenty-one. We got a gender request.
Oh, I apologize. I checked it off by mistake. Commissioner Jacobson, since you uh caught my mistake.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to wish uh everybody a great Veterans Day. I want to thank our veterans, uh current military along with all their families. Um, so thank you all very much. Um, and then um along the lines of Veterans Day, uh one of the greatest things our veterans have given us is the right to vote. And so I hope none of us take that right uh for granted. Get out and vote. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hockaday.
Again, Veterans Day, we've got uh kind of the push to have green lights out. And I know they're difficult to find. I've been looking all over the place for green light bulbs. Uh, I think maybe Home Depot has them or somebody like that, but definitely let's uh show our thanks to the veterans and that's about all I have with this meeting.
Commissioner Gray.
Again, just a final thank you to to everybody. I I really, really, I mean, I I know it pissed a lot of people off and over the over the years and I hopefully made a lot of people happy as well, made a lot of great friends here and uh you know, even Russ. But I I do want to thank you guys and uh thank you to, you know, my fellow vets. Uh, we got three of them up here and uh all three of us just happened to be Air Force, by the way, so. But you know, for the other vets out there too, thank you guys. Um, yeah, you paid the price. So thank you, everybody. Good luck.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, add my comments, you know, thank you to the veterans too. Um, also, please go out and vote. And one other note, um we will be, the Lyon County will be hosting a SLU PAC meeting, which is the state land use advisory, state land use planning advisory council will be hosting their their quarterly meeting here in this room next Thursday. So, thanks for that.
Um, boy, yeah, Mr. Gray. Good luck on Tuesday. I don't think you need it, but good luck on Tuesday and um you are coming back for the Christmas party.
I will be back for the Christmas party.
All right. So as long as you're coming back, you know, we can, we can harass you then. Um, trip you, run you over. No, I'm just kidding.
And you know, I want to say, I did, I thank you both. I did want, I did want to thank the board also, you know, and previous boards. Man, I've always gotten along, but we're always a team and I want to thank all you guys for what you do for your community and uh I truly mean that. We don't always see eye to eye, but you know, I believe you guys are doing what you believe is right.
So, and I know we're looking forward to Thanksgiving, but just so that people can get it on their calendars. Silver Springs tree lighting, December tenth. Firetruck Santa, you know, the normal routine. So mark your calendars, expect to see everybody there. So, and we always have a really good time, you know, hot cocoa, coffee if you want it, lots of cookies and goodies. Obviously Santa's there. So come and see us. Uh, okay, so now that I remember, went ahead and got Commissioner comments. Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. I did, I marked it off early and skipped right by it. Uh, we'll take uh, we're going to adjourn and then take a short break while you get the room ready.
Did you do public participation?
I did. I did that when he reminded me the.
Okay, with with your comments, I don't.
Okay, do I have anybody in the public participation? One more time, just in case. Still seeing none. Things adjourned.